All right, call this meeting aboard, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the fine of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Uh, there is an executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting to discuss possible litigation. Uh, roll call, please.
Ice, sir.
Savage.
Here.
Roche's.
Here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Martina.
Um, I have two additions to the agenda, one of an upgrading to the camera system at the police station and to also have a forensic audit completed. Do I have a second to add those items to the agenda? Martina. Barnhart.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ice, sir. Roche's. Yes. I make the motion for approval of minutes and reports, minutes from January thirteenth and twenty-seventh meetings and reports from the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, health department, parks, rec, planning commission. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Ice, sir. Yes. Uh, city administrator update, Mr. Backer.
Um, today we had a meeting with the Senate majority policy committee to talk about flight and, um, well, specifically some very for us, but really in the region. Um, good conversation, a lot of potential opportunities for us and then working with legislators to see if we can combat some of the more flight problem. And then also I'm working with Councilwoman Martina to meet with Park um, and some of their board members and their executive director to talk about any potential issues they may have for accessibility.
Um, any updates on like any grant, like for facade grants or like grants to help escape park and rebuild, anything like that?
So, um, council, I did send council, um, a grant that could be used for, uh, skate park effectively, but also could be used for, um, the OPG, um, other on the state parks and rec in general. Um, that specifically facade grant isn't till, um, it's with Main Street Matters now, which is not till fall of twenty twenty-five.
Is there any way we can get like the information to the businesses on what is needed prior to fall? That way they can get anything that they needed. So when the application does open, hey, I'm ready to go. So that way I'm not scrambling at the last minute to get the information that's needed. Like, do they have like a website that, hey, here are the things we need to have ready for the application of a grant or anything like that?
So we'll, um, we probably should meet with SRI to talk about, um, Main Street Matters because I know they've expressed, uh, interest in going for that grant. We will be competing with them. Um, I know they mentioned that in one of our meetings about going for Main, uh, Main Street Matters for the, um, downtown manager position. Um, so in order to not go for the same grant and, and compete with someone else within the city, we probably should meet, um, and talk about our priority and, and their priority on that.
But I'm just saying if a business wants to go, so we need to apply for, for the business, the business.
Correct, correct. The business can't go for it and apply themselves.
Okay.
So we would have to be, so how it works is we would be the applicant and, um, we beforehand, we would get, say there's five businesses that are interested. We would get all their information, make sure they have the funding, what their project is. Um, and then we would go for the max amount at that point to go for. Um, so we would have to be the applicant, take, you know, be the applicant themselves. Um, so in order to, it, it comes from the exact same grant. So in order to not, uh, cause an issue at the state level, um, you probably should have a conversation with SRI and to decide on how council and SRI want to move forward. But that's specific.
Do you want to take some different businesses out of the grant?
Where you're saying, so what you're saying is we, like, if, if a business does come, we have to prioritize it. We want to go through it with SRI or go with the grant for the business. I'm just trying to say. The, the grant, sorry, go ahead.
So how facade grant works is you have to do all the legwork first. So you have to find all the property owners that want to have an improvement on their facade. They have to get the estimates and they have to have signed, you know, agreements that, you know, this is the estimate they got and blah, blah, blah. And that's so that the project is already detailed before you even apply for the facade grant.
Yeah.
So you're going to be doing all of that work.
You mean us or the business owner?
You. You're going to get, you're going to gather all that paperwork.
Yeah, from the business owner.
From the business owner. So you're responsible for getting all of that in fact from the business owners. You're going to coordinate all of that. And then if you get the grant, then you're responsible for administering the grant to ensure that.
Funds are being approved.
Funds are being applied appropriately, all the correct documentation comes back. So there's an administrative tail to that, but that, you know, I'm sure you can do that. Um, and as far as whether or not that competes with the Main Street Matters, um, Main Street designation and funding that, that SRI is planning to, um, apply for, we probably need to talk about that. We probably need to ask, um, the Pennsylvania Downtown Center and ECD if the, if in fact those two compete with each other. So we would just need to get that information and then see where we are.
Because that, since that funding and that funding's under the same program, you apply for that same funding just for different things. So they, they could say, I guess I should say, they could say, you can only pick one, which one do you choose?
Can you look at that, the next update?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, chief, engine update.
Oh, yeah. So, so basically two thousand twenty-four yearly, uh, okay, so some stats and stuff like that. We haven't done it years before. Um, just real quick, uh, calls for service, we had six thousand five hundred and forty police incidents. Uh, just saying, um, the officers made a hundred and eighty-two, basically summary arrests, a hundred and eighteen felony arrests, three hundred and fifty-six misdemeanor arrests, six hundred and seven summary arrests, two hundred and eighty-eight traffic arrests, a hundred and seventy-one. Um, I also want to introduce the, uh, business checks, um, in downtown. So what I'm looking to do is clean off there, that's what I'm like doing right now, um, along with myself. When I go business to business with this form, uh, what that form basically is, we'll relay and pick them up here if, if we miss them. Um, it's basically the business, the business address, the owner, the owner's address, the primary contact, secondary contact number, um, just some stuff in there with the skill machines, uh, primary contact, secondary contact. Also, do your, does your business have surveillance video? Um, we'd like to start working on gathering, uh, throughout the city, videos, locations that have video surveillance. Um, if people have video surveillance, we ask, you can pick up a machine, um, so that we can start documenting this in our lock system that we have in our cars along with the nine one one system. Um, I think it's a good thing to start this, um, even though we do, codes is really up on, on what they do. Um, but again, a lot of businesses have changed, um, owners have changed and we need that contact so we can move quicker. Uh, the other thing with vacation time coming up and things like that, uh, summary police is now going to introduce the, uh, summary, uh, police department vacation checks. So if you would like your house to be checked on, whether you're just going away for the weekend, whether you're going on vacation, um, you're going to stop in, grab a form, it's also going to be on the website. Uh, it's the business, the home address, uh, date of vacation, contact person and a phone number. So that basically we can, we have that information as well in our computer system. Um, just so council's aware, the Axon project, uh, was initiated in January here. We're fully, uh, apart, uh, apart of the OPRs, uh, we have new camera systems inside the cars as well as body cams. Um, every officer now has a body cam, um, basically really state of the art where if they're on a scene and we have newer officer or something like that, they can call me actually on my cell phone and I can, uh, wifi right into their scene. So they can push a button and bring me right on the scene with them. Uh, that was one of, uh, you know, I praise the council for actually, uh, stepping up and, and, you know, coming through with that for us because it's going to be a, a big benefit. I know me coming in, it's usually about fourteen minutes, right? For me, I can be right on the video, looking to see what's going on, um, at the scene. Um, so the other third part of that is the Taser, uh, project, uh, that it will be, uh, instituted on, implemented on February, or February seventeenth, we'll be a part on that. Uh, we also changed over to instead of having shotguns in the cars, we're going to have left legal, uh, beanbag rounds. Um, instead of having the shotgun, we'll be able to deploy how the left legal beanbags. So a lot of different changes that, that we're bringing, uh, my team has, has, has really stepped up. And I think the team is, 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 is dealing very well with, uh, council support and everything that you're, you're bringing. And, you know, a lot of my support just to get set up, towards, uh, anything.
Thank you, chief. Uh, moving on to, uh, knockboxes, uh, Barnhart.
Um, piggybacking off of what the chief said, we want the business owners, if they, if they want to purchase a knockbox, put on there, they can give the code to get into the key, to get into their business in case something happens while they are on vacation. And also the fire department, you know, if the fire department has to get in, you don't kind of break the door down then. You can just hit the buttons and pull the key out and unlock the door. So I'd like to have the businesses that they're interested in buying one of them, register with the, uh, the police chief and the fire chief.
All right, thank you, Councilman Barnhart. Uh, moving on to hold business, uh, Councilman Barnhart, you were.
This is, there's no raises included, that just want to clarify some titles here so they, everybody knows who, who's in charge now. The code supervisor, uh, I'd like to, uh, she's already the, the logistics officer, co logistics officer. Slash, I want to make a motion to name also the code supervisor, Shrodalso.
Second. Martina. Savage.
Yes.
Ice, sir.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes.
And also there's no extra frills here, just the title, so everybody's, everybody knows they're up to date. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to name the code deputy supervisor, George Snyder.
Second. Ice, sir.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Uh, moving on, this is more of an update, but, uh, DMA director slash, uh, meeting update. I know we met a few years ago. I don't know if, if the chief wanted to talk, uh, fire chief wanted to talk about this at all or not.
Well, I think, I mean, it involves all of us, police department, everybody, all of them. We had that one meeting after the riverfront deal and now you're in another bad deal, so I think we should, you know, get back together because we have changed the major director, whatever you want.
Yeah, and what we can do is the old plan that we do have, we can send out to set departments that way they can kind of hear it before they come to the meeting and have an idea of, you know, what we're talking about, what their responsibilities are when it comes to this plan. So that way we're not just sitting in the meeting saying, hey, we got to do this. Like, they can come with some things to do and discuss and see what we can do moving forward. So we can send that out to everyone that who is involved and tries up a meeting date and then we can move on from there.
We got two years ago.
It was actually three, but who's counting? Right now, Anthony Cole?
Anthony Cole.
Anthony Cole from Paul.
But he, did he get his stuff yet? I mean, then you have to get some papers again.
Yeah, well, regardless, we'll make sure he has his papers when the meetings are, that way we can get that going. That way we can get the ball rolling with that one. So again, that was more of an update here. Uh, but moving on here, uh, we had to amend and, uh, we need to amend and revoke on the fee schedule because some things were added there. We slipped our minds last, uh, week. So, uh, if there's any questions on that.
Is that the cause?
I'm sorry.
Is that the, the cases reported?
That's a new motion.
So I'll make the motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, amend and revoke on the city fee schedule. Do I have a second?
Second.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice, sir.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
All right, uh, going under new business here, these were the two things that were added to the agenda. Uh, the first one would be to, I make the motion to vote on updating the, uh, camera system at the police station. And the, the items that would be updated are on the list that was provided. The old cameras from the police station along with the DVR system will be coming down to city hall here to have those cameras installed and set offices. Uh, that way we don't have to purchase those cameras and then we will get with our IT and see what it costs to run the hardware and the manpower to get them installed. So I make the motion to accept the quote for the new, uh, I, um, camera upgrade at the cost of installation of and cost of materials at thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Do I have a second?
One second.
Um, before we, I have a question.
Yes.
Joel, uh, are we, are we going with this as professional services?
Yes.
Okay. It means, so is it any other quotes? Just this company?
It was just this company, I believe it came back with the lowest quote.
Okay.
I mean, did we have, I mean, Kim Riley did, did, I'm.
We, we, we have, we have a system, council has a, we have a system that is in use right now. Um, the problem is is the integrity of that system. And my thing is I only want one or two people to have access to that, uh, system. Where in the past we've had, where everybody has had access to that and I think that just leaves problems. Therefore, it'd be someone from city hall and someone from the police department that will basically have access, access to those cameras only. That way there is no, no, uh, she's a, a territory of.
I, I have a question. If we, would there be a problem with the integration of cameras in different places? If we had some, some different member doing different camera systems?
So the camera system you have in the city right now is the LP, LPE, LPI system, which is done by personal work. Um, that's all the system, that's all the cameras that you guys have at the skate rink, uh, that are at, down at the skate park, that are up, up on, uh.
Front Street.
Yeah, Front Street. It's that same camera system, therefore.
So we're staying within the same system?
In the same system. What you're getting is basically free. I'm, I'm going to give up the twenty eight cameras, about twenty eight cameras, indoor and outdoor cameras. And you may also be able to use that in intersections as well.
So they're all compatible with each other and so it's.
Correct.
Dave, is that it for the, for the certain?
Yeah. All right, so I made, uh, made motion. I don't know. Barnhart, second. Ice, sir. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to the second, uh, added, uh, motion to the agenda. I'd like to add to have a forensic audit done on, uh, record keeping for the past seven years up at the ice skating rink and between those funds and the treasure department. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have another question, sorry.
Yes.
So, Jerome, do you have an opinion on an entire audit?
I, I don't know if you know what the topic of the.
So it was an audit on finances at the.
Between the, between the parks and rec and the treasure department. Recently, there have been some thefts up at the ice skating rink with, um, question on the procedures and processes of how we, uh, do our record keeping and, and, uh, keeping of funds up there that are collected each and every day. Uh, just recently, some reports came that, uh, the, the funds need to be counted and lo and behold, uh, there were seventeen money bags that needed to be counted. Uh, many of the money bags, the receipts did not match up. Um, the money bags were stored in filing cabinets, coves, things like that, nothing in a secure process. And along with that, um, there was also reports that, uh, funds from, you know, petty cash, possession stand funds were also missing throughout the years. Uh, they, they did have a working cash register up there at one time, they haven't had them in quite some time as well. So I think it's in the best interest of the city to make sure if thefts were taken, what amounts were there? Or if there was no thefts taken, then we know that also is factual as well.
Well, I'm not sure if you do a forensic audit, you, you might want to just include this in the city audit. That's very important. That's definitely, we started for twenty twenty. You know, you might just, you know, ask them to.
Well, we, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what that they do. I mean, do they dive into the bookkeeping to see how the record keeping is being done because. So they do not. The one that, the one that we did.
They do not make recommendations on best practices.
Yeah, I think, I think that has to be done because when someone, you know, it's.
Or, yes, correct, but the current one that we do, they, they do not make.
Because with.
I'm saying, if you were to speak on that.
Question.
Question.
I mean, but those, I mean, I think it's best practice that we make it someone that we already don't do business with because if this is a one-time thing, great, but if this is something going on for many years.
But, uh, you don't have to worry about doing business with somebody that we don't do business with. Um, and they sign their name, they have the license, they have the C P A, you're not going to.
I mean, are they going to, like I said, they're going to go back to the bookkeeping to make sure the bookkeeping and all those things are being done properly and, and things are being reported and not reported?
Their audit is going to be as inclusive as any other audit or, uh, forensic audit now, it costs a lot more. And to come to the same thing. I would suggest that, um, if you go root of our current city auditor and expand upon their scope, whatever you do more, they would then find something that is eventually around.
Going deeper then?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, when did it, when do you expect them to start?
I think they're going to start here relatively soon, probably the next month or two.
Okay, well, you, you have their contact information, correct? That way we can, what?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so do we, Joel, do we need to vote on that?
Just to expand the, yes, you have to vote to expand their services.
Okay.
We check with them and if they choose not to do something, they can back and hook to a different auditor. But I think, you know, an audit is an audit, I don't think you need to sort of call for a, for a.
Under that circumstance, maybe what we want to do is just table it for tonight until you talk to that auditor, see if they're willing to expand their scope. And then we can vote on, yeah.
And know how much it will cost us.
Exactly.
Yeah. All right, so. All right, so I'll just make the motion to table that until next meeting to get numbers. Do I have a second? Second. Ice, sir. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Uh, moving on, Mr. Backer, a little of support.
Um, Booby, would you like to speak up this? So this is a request for a letter of support for a grant that I'm submitting, uh, for the Appalachian Regional Commission's Ready Grants to Grow Initiative. This is a capacity building grant for Sunbury revitalization to hire a full-time downtown manager and establish a downtown management program. The desire for this program comes out of our work with the downtown Sunbury team and through the Blueprint Communities Program. The, um, community, uh, engagements activities that we've done have shown that business owners and residents alike have a desire to see the downtown storefronts full, have more housing developed downtown. And this is all within the scope of what a downtown manager would do, to recruit, retain businesses, to maintain that community engagement with business owners and residents and property owners, um, to formulate and organize activities in the downtown to bring in, put traffic to the businesses. So, um, this grant will be submitted this week. To the letter of support, what I'm asking for is, this is a three-year project period. The total I'm asking for is fifteen thousand dollars for the city to commit that. That would be five thousand dollars per year out of the community and economic development line item. And, and if we get the grants, then we would want to see that money come to us, five thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six, seven and eight.
Question, anyone? All right, so I'll make a motion for the letter of support for SRI. Do I have a second?
One second.
Ice, sir.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes. Martina.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on here, uh, for the contract of, uh, superstar, uh, tribute contract, um, this is for the summer kickoff for the entertainment. Um, Joel, I had Joel review the contract and Joel, if you just speak about it real quick.
Yeah, I reviewed the contract, it's the same as the one of this last year. I didn't see any people probably were.
Okay, so any questions on that?
Is this the contract that's always been signed?
Well, I just signed it in preparation, like, you know how Spank and Kevin or Nate sign the bills prior to us voting on? Just like put the bill in, waiting for it. And once it, if it gets approved, it gets sent, if it does not get approved, and it doesn't get sent, like, anything else that's in the folder that I need to sign.
My question is, and I don't know any about this Facebook stuff, what's the group that's informed that we're working with?
So when we were going out, when I was going out with the people who were volunteer, um, we went to different businesses and said, hey, what do you, who, who do you represent, who you're from? We said, okay, we're part of the city and many times, a lot of people, when we say we're part of the city, they really want nothing to do with us from they were true, from how they were treated in the past. I got with Solicitor Reese here, he made some suggestion into forming a nonprofit, which we created a name about. The Solicitor Reese helped the paper we're going for that, and that's the group you're referring to.
So are they collecting money towards this function or?
Like, we're, like, we're doing fundraiser events, like, if you do have Facebook, you see, we're doing a Big Ticket Bingo this weekend at Spy Last to help raise funds for these events that are being held in the city. Remind you, like, we do summer kickoff, we, we do national night out, we do the Halloween parade and we do New Year's Eve. Many of these events used to be put on by other organizations that lost volunteers, didn't longer could do it. And we picked them up to help keep them going to have these free community events for the community to enjoy.
What's the structure of this, with the, the pressure? Where's the funds being kept?
Well, we did, we, we're just seeing this go now, so we're, Joel, maybe you could speak about this because this is your first time doing this.
No. The long and the short of it is that I saw on Facebook that this was going to be taking place. I talked to Josh about the fact that he needs to have a nonprofit organized. I did this, um, not as Solicitor of the city, but as a private attorney. Um, I helped him form the nonprofit and we've discussed the fact that the monies need to go from the nonprofit into the city, not vice versa. Um, we've also discussed the fact that, um, the monies are going to be, well, basically that, that the flow of the monies will go from the nonprofit into the city. Money can't go from the city into the nonprofit.
So the, so what we're talking here would go right, not into there to get paid for, but going right to the, the band that we had last year for.
Let's keep the contract, I'm looking, as I've been told, we're into.
What have you been told?
Well, people looked at Facebook and said that you have been collecting money and so forth. Have you received any money in this group yet?
Have we received money? I mean, we received donations for the Big Ticket Bingo ticket. Um, we have. A purchase. Bingo tickets were purchased, yes, they were. And after all these things will be dispersed, then money will go where it has to go. But it's like, you know, you know how it is with any event, there's always upright cost. We put in a lot of these bills and then when the money comes in, the money will go to where it needs to go from the recommendation of the solicitor, which we have spoken about.
Backer, Joel, but there's no money being watched in the city, according to, is there accounts out of the city yet, like Joel just mentioned?
I mean, like you said, we do our summer kickoff account, which we have had here, I don't know what.
No, no, I mean, from your organization.
We, we haven't gotten, we, we just started this year, probably within the last.
They didn't raise the funds yet. The funds haven't been raised. What they did was spend, I believe, in home loan to buy tickets and that kind of stuff. And they got donations in order to have their first fundraiser, which is this weekend. So there is no funds raised yet, is my, that's my understanding, I'm not talking backwards.
Ultimately, you'll raise the funds and it will end, I mean, that will be paying for whatever you're expecting, possibly currently. So you're.
The ultimate goal is to get.
Ultimately, we're kind of, for lack of a better term, up from this.
Yeah, and.
Into a device.
Yeah, and that's the main goal long-term wise, to become independent from sponsorships, fundraisers and things like that. Because, as I said once again, these events were once held by other entities that no longer wanted to do them and we kept them going. So that's the whole point. And going back again, when you're going back to fundraising, going out and dealing with businesses outside the city of Sunbury, when you mentioned the city of Sunbury, they don't want to do business with us because the way they have been treated in the past. And those are exact words from business owners, like, no, I'm good.
What happens if we don't raise enough money to cover it?
Well, then it falls back on me. Me, me.
I'm asking the person, but I mean, like, because I know.
Because we, I mean, we do have money set aside from the previous years that we've had. I mean, Kevin and, like I said, with National Night, we have money set aside. For Halloween parade, we have money set aside. New Year's Eve, obviously, we do not, we're aware of that. That's why we're trying to hit the ground running now in February and not waiting till last minute. Because Jim, you know how it is, Joey, you know how it is, we're running events, they cost money. And we all go out to the same people asking for money, so we're trying to come up with different ways to fundraise so we don't continue to go to the same person asking for money. I mean, you're more welcome to join the, join the committee, understand what's going on, and show up to the meetings to help. I mean, we're more welcome to get any volunteers.
Where are we taking this allocation vote, this?
This would be economic development as.
So we're just, but we're, what you're asking for with this contract is you want us to include the whole total amount or just the down game?
It'd be the, it'd be like what we, what we, have we allocated before, ten thousand to go towards it, as we've done the last, well, this would be the third year in a row, the last two previous years, well, we've done the same thing before. The last two previous years, well, we've done the same thing before. I mean, Joel, Joel saw, it's basically saying this is the, like, half now, half when they perform.
So, I mean, like, objectively, there's a check for seven thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars, which, which is probably half the cost.
Correct, yes.
Well, here's the thing, though, I haven't read the contract, so I don't know if it's telling you this is upfront now and we're gonna pay the rest, or if we're gonna put it to the nonprofit, or who.
This is going, this is going to de-ban themselves.
So, so let me do a last one, please. The contract that Joel, I suspect is probably the same.
It's the same.
So, I'm not saying something I didn't read.
Okay.
So, so the way the contract was last, I guess, same, same ones as this year, is that they ask for a percent of that, and then the balance is paid when they show up the day of the contract. From a legal standpoint, Joel reviewed it, I mean, it's, um, question is whether the council's gonna go along with it, or not, I think it'll go along with it. This same thing that happened last year, and actually, we're actually only paying a certain amount this year, without arguing about that as we did last year.
So, there's another question, and Joel, back to this committee that you formed, are they part of the city, or aren't they part of the city?
No.
Do I part of the city, where's the liability file, number one?
Well, what, which liability? There's a whole lot of different liabilities.
Well, all of it, yes. If they're collecting money for a function for the city of Sunbury.
Not, I'm sorry.
Good, go ahead. Well, if something goes wrong, they're gonna be suing us because of the fact, they're, when you ask for the money, you're saying you're asking as a group to fund projects or functions in the city? What are you telling these folks?
We're, I, this recommendation of Solicitor, we're this group hosting these events in the city of Sunbury.
So.
So they have to have their own insurance.
And then if you do that, they would have to.
Yeah, when we get, when we get, when we get to that point, yes, when we get to the event, yes, we'll have that, but.
Are we going to put a certain amount of liability?
Well, whatever, I mean, whatever we recommend from anyone else has to run a facility from the city, wait, I suppose, I think, I don't know.
I think it's better, I think, with, with the, the. And, and, yeah, I mean, we have to go with the, um.
Whatever purbies.
Whatever the purries.
Yeah.
So you're gonna buy insurance, each event you do.
Yeah, or see what the best cost savings thing overall. But just remember, Councilman Meister, like, as you do parks and rent, it's for the city, we're doing this for the city.
I'm just looking for the liability.
No, 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 I, 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 no, I completely understand.
But Joel. In between the, the events, do we still have an exposure with the, why don't you better put in a yearly?
Well, as we said, whichever the best is financially long.
I want to make sure we cover the backside, even though it might be cheaper either way.
Yeah.
Well, do you mean liability because of the fundraising activities? Yes. No. No, no, that's why, exactly why I set it up, so there would be no liability on this. That was the whole point, doing.
So they want to solicit for money.
They're doing it for themselves.
They're doing it as the group, not as somebody.
You got it.
Providing.
But they're gonna use the money to do an event in the city of Sunbury. Does that make sense?
Exclusively in the city of Sunbury?
Well, like, summer kickoff is gonna take place in the city of Sunbury, National Night Out is gonna take place in the city of Sunbury.
So your nonprofit will also potentially work for other communities as well?
Our goal is to keep things in the city of Sunbury to bring people to the city of Sunbury. That is our ultimate goal.
How's it promoted, as a city event or a?
It's hosted as, our name is Valley Fusion being hosted in the city of Sunbury.
So it's a five oh one C three event, not a city of Sunbury event?
Not yet. Well, it's a, they're not a five oh one.
Organizations event in the city.
It's an corporate event, yes.
But it's not a city event anymore.
Right.
So why does the city signing the contract? Right.
Well, it's just for the funds portion of it. It's like how we.
That's the whole point, you say you're gonna raise money to pay all the bills, but you're asking the city to sign the contract in which they would be responsible for paying that bill if you don't raise enough money. Right. So that's, that's why I'm not.
But Joey, we have money in our banking stuff to cover the bill.
Then why does the city have to sign the contract?
Joel? Alright.
I'll speak up. The, my understanding is, there is a very, very simple contract. I saw it, I read it, I don't have it committed to memory. What it said was, basically, the, they require seven thousand five hundred dollars.
And some change for down payment.
For a down payment, and they require seven thousand five hundred-ish when they show up that day. They, if there is a cancellation by the group, yep, before such and such a date, then they don't have to repay the money, if they're, if it's after such and such a date, then you have to repay the money. Um, and that was basically it, I mean, it was like a one-page, double-spaced contract, it was very, 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 very simple.
And the city councils repay that?
If the city councils repay it. No, but, actually, no, it's not the city, it's his entity. Um, the entity does, but at this point, my understanding is, the contract itself is being entered by them, but it's being, the money is being fronted by the city, it's being repaid by them. That's my understanding, is that right?
But, but the group's not a group yet, as in formal?
No, it's a group, they're not a five oh one C three, they're not federal.
Was there a treasurer?
The, I, I have no idea, I just, I don't know that's wrong. The. In the last three weeks, they became a nonprofit, I mean, this just came up, but they became a nonprofit in Pennsylvania. Once they receive their certification, which they did, now they can file via five oh one C three.
So they're, so they're Pennsylvania now, or is there just not a federal?
Exactly, that's what I'm telling you, yes. I, I didn't have a chance to read the five oh one C three.
I have another question.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be less liability to the city to have a lease agreement for someone to have an event? If the event is going to be promoted by a group or organization in the city, then lease the land from the city and hold your event.
That, that is, is my understanding of what will happen.
But then, the city shouldn't be signing the contract to pay the vendor, the city could be signing a lease agreement with the group rather than a lease agreement with the performer.
Well, that's, you're, you're mixing apples and oranges, I think, I mean, the only, I'm not trying to be cocky.
No, no, I, please, straighten me out.
The, the idea of the lease would be a liability concept and a usage concept for the ground itself, okay? So, for example, if somebody slips and falls, they're gonna sue these guys, not the city. Or they, these guys would actually indemnify the city and take responsibility for it by through their insurance policy. Because of the timing of this, my, again, I'm telling you my understanding, okay? Because of the timing, the city is basically signing as the guarantor of the payment for the ban to get started, okay? With the idea that Josh's group is going to repay the city for those money, but can I guarantee that is going to happen? No. Okay? That's why I'm being very clear with the board tonight of that fact. Um, the simple fact is, the council is being asked to guarantee the monies that are going to be half of the payment for this ban group to commit. That's where we're at, but it doesn't have anything to do with the leases and ground, or that's all.
Well, I think so, but, but, how about, how about, this solves some of the problems, Joel?
I'm sorry, say it again. This solves some of the problems, but if we did a, a letter of agreement with that organization that they fund, that they form for this project, for this amount of money that we're talking about right now, with the understanding that if they don't meet the criteria, you're gonna be able to pay for them now, that money would be refunded back to us.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe that would lead some attention, and, um, the city, you know, obviously, you're not the only one who, you know, should be asking, or, or you're only being helped for the seven thousand dollars for which I've been stood and held, along with the fact that, you know, maybe LA, then say they were paying it back to us.
So if we're going to do that, should we do that and then actually see the contract before we agree to sign the check?
I think what he's saying is the contract, come back to it, do we go back to the contract?
There has to be some kind of contract, I don't, because I'm not saying.
Okay, we'll just table it, sooner or later, they, to get it figured out, and.
There would have to be a letter of agreement between the city and that, and that organization.
And then the contract for those group would be separate.
The contract would be with them, and they'd be responsible for the seven thousand some odd dollars if they don't meet the requirements. Would that work? No, it certainly won't.
I don't realize.
That was just a press, you know, this for a time.
Now, I'm always saying that, from a scale point, that, you know, to book these people, if, if, if they don't want this to happen, they're just table.
Like, last month, you know, like, they're number, they're, they're number one Jimmy Buffett tribute band in the nation, presidency in Vegas, they're booked, they're getting booked.
If you want this project to go forward, I mean, you made a motion, then Joel does a lay with that company, or you buy money, put some big awards in there that we need to have, and move forward and, and go like that, and transfer to whoever the money is. Just writing this down. I think you're a good attachment. And then you can put it in a record, in a time school.
Need to, um, I, I think I'm just still, I'm either being very dense or just confused, I mean, I just don't understand how we did it last year without the nonprofit, but now we've mixed the nonprofit and to reimburse.
Well, last year we didn't do it with the nonprofit, the city did everything, and then there were overruns or underruns. The city, it's just happened.
But we fundraised the difference, that's what I'm watching.
Well, the city would be responsible.
Yeah, correct.
Last year the city was responsible.
And I, I imagine doing the nonprofit, do they more, usually more, obviously, more lenient, correct?
Correct, for different, yes, for fixed, that's correct, and for fun, and for fun.
So then I have another question, and somebody else wants to throw an event, and they also have a nonprofit, is the city gonna front the money for them to throw an event?
Okay, here, here, we'll ma, we'll make it very simple, we'll make it very, Joel, make it very simple, no, hold on, hold on, make it very simple. Keep your money, we have the money we have in the account, we'll do the rest ourselves. It's a very simple concept, there you go. And then, when no one else wants to do anything, because, I'll tell you right now, without myself in this group, National Night Out does not happen. The chief and I, in the front office there, worked tremendous hours, we're planning this now. Halloween Parade, no one else up here helps do anything, we, we're planning that now, same thing with New Year's Eve. So, when we say enough's enough, we don't wanna do anymore, I hope somebody up here steps up and says, you know what, we'll take the time to do these community events, because, Lori, Jo, Lori, you're, was Lori here?
No, I'm just standing.
Because she used to, no, but like I said, other, I'm sorry, like, you know how it is with SRI, you guys used to do New Year's Eve, the volunteers ran out, you guys couldn't do anymore. We did it, because it was a great event for the city of Sunbury. The Halloween Parade is done by the fire police, they're running out of volunteers, if we want to help them, it wouldn't get done. Same thing with National Night Out. So the volunteerism is dying, and so it's, it's okay, keep the money, it's okay.
I think anybody saying it's not a good idea, I just think you need to do it together.
But like, we're, look how complicated this is.
But doesn't it complicate?
Protect, protect everybody, for everybody's interest. Now, the game is against doing something, but I think maybe, answer, you know, whatever other questions Nate may have, let Joel come up with a motion, and if they vote for it, they vote for it, they don't vote for it, they don't vote for it, they need to hear it from everybody, any other way you want to.
But Josh, even if the city had money, if you take care of the contract and pay the money, and then lease the ground like Amy suggested, then the city is only wanting towards the goals.
I'm like that, I, I, there we go, we can do that. Does that sound, would you, Councilman Meister?
Yep, uh, Joel, something like that.
Alright.
I thought I was trying to solve the problem.
No, 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 the, I, I just wanna make sure, I'm understanding, so. Well, do what Councilman Meister says, we have the money in our account for treasurer's trip.
Now, who's money? He's funding income and title of money.
No, 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 in the, in the budget, we have Sunbury Summer Kickoff money that we have fundraised for the last three years.
Out of the Summer Kickoff money?
Yes, that will cover the cost, that we, that way we need to contract out.
But you said about.
This was supposed to be from economic development, which is fine, we'll do what you said, we can make a donation back, that's fine.
I just, I thought, man, if your group had the money, then don't worry about, you wanna take care of the contract, but you refer back to city money again.
No, 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 not the city money, the money that we fundraised throughout the last three years, that we have in the bank account under Sunbury Summer Kickoff, there. That was not, it was a fundraiser doing everything we've done.
Well, back square one, technically, it's city money, it's group money, but it's.
So, okay, so.
I'm not trying to make this difficult, I'm just trying to solve the problem. Well, no, I'm, well, you said, I know I took it, that your group had the money. But, but that's, I'm sorry.
So, Joel, put something together that makes sense.
I don't know if Joel knows. Yeah, I do, I do, I do, I'm following, it's just taking a little bit. Let me have faith. Let, let me take a shot at a motion, you guys tell me if you are in agreement. The motion would be that the city would release the monies in the line item currently for summer kickoff to be paid to this entity, by and through a contract that's going to be entered by Josh's group to hold the summer kickoff here. The monies will then, the responsibility of the summer kickoff, et cetera, is going to be on Josh's group, and when I say Josh's group, I mean Valley Fusion, and that the, if the city desires to contribute further monies to the summer kickoff, that would be done at a later date and through a different motion.
Is that everyone's need?
That.
They signed the contract, they covered the liability.
Right, they're, they're signing the contract, the city is merely releasing the funds for the, in the summer kickoff line item.
I have two questions, do you have a summer kickoff line item?
Yeah.
Well, when we have our line item, it has never been.
Because it's, it's not, it's like, for example, where, yes, there you go.
Okay. Uh, number two, the contract was already signed, like you said, because it needed to be signed before.
It was not, it was not submitted.
Okay, so it was resigned.
Well, it's just signed, it hasn't been submitted, we just have a vote.
So I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have two signatures on the same event, okay?
I'll advise the contract.
It's, it's.
Um, so that would be my suggestion of a motion.
Okay, I'll make that, can I, can I make that motion?
You can make that.
But Joel, do you understand everything? Because you said, it's my understanding.
Well, no, my understanding is of the facts of the situation. What I'm saying, I understand the legalities of the situation. I'm telling you that I am not sitting here and Joel Reese guaranteeing the facts of everything I'm telling you, because I haven't been told the facts. Does that make sense, Julie?
It does, it does.
So what I'm telling you is, I can tell you legally, this is okay. What the council decides to do with it, that's up to council.
Right, right. It just sounds like you came back to Doe.
I'm sorry?
It sounds like you came back to Doe, Doe the dear.
Oh. No, I, I get it. Nate, other questions?
No.
Oh, so I can make the motion?
Josh, it's not that we don't wanna do anything, it's just the fact that we're all trying to make sure that it's the right way, and it's, it's a new group that we don't know, with members that we don't know, we don't know where the money is, we don't know if it's gonna be reimbursed, and it's not that we're fighting you, but I don't, I mean, we can, we're sitting right here and can hear you, we're not fighting you on the event, and it's disingenuous to say that none of us go and do anything else in the city when we all do and contribute things to it.
So if, so I look forward to anyone who'd like to be a part of the group to help these city events continue to show up at our weekly meetings, then?
As has SRI for thirty years, but now we have a separate group that wants to find its own volunteers and money from the city. So, I, as a volunteer on many different places and organizations, wonder why, when we talk about working together and not splitting hairs, are now taking a very minimal volunteer base, and we're gonna try and stretch it even more thin, instead of working together. It's very interesting to me.
Very true. So honestly, we should, can you say could we table this, Josh, in two weeks and get it all hashed out, that you're going to lose this tricky thing?
We'll find out in two weeks. I mean, I can't say yes or no, like, they're waiting to get an answer, if they wait two weeks, I can, I can say, listen, we need to wait two weeks, if they wait, they do, if they don't, they don't, I can't, it's one, I can't guarantee it. If someone else proposes for that date and pays the money, obviously, they're going to go where the money goes, just like anybody else.
I, I just wish we were going to have a different conversation about it, what we had to hash it out and argue over it, and now, when we should have talked about it sooner. But we had enough public meetings, we could have added to that, or we could have put a public meeting out.
I'm saying, you got to do it here anyways.
Correct, but we could have very easily had a whole different, a whole different discussion.
I'll make, Joel, I'll make a motion for Joel to have a second.
I'll say.
Martina.
I, 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 I think I need more, so I'm going to have to come out.
Ister.
No.
Joel, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
How soon can you put that together?
Tonight.
Keep on.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Bruschus. Yes.
Savage. No. But I will say, I am willing, I'm open to the idea, and if we need to do a phone call, I can make myself available, we can get it served.
All right, moving on, New Orleans County Community Service Waiver, D. O. O'Donnell here. Uh, D. O'Donnell, could you just elaborate on what this will be?
So, before I get started, I was at the last ni- National Night Out, before I was shot with a taser, which was slightly less painful than this feeling.
Hello.
I don't plan on doing that again the next one.
Would you take the less lethal instead?
I think we're done with that, I think. Um, so, regarding this waiver, so for the last year, I've been really trying to get some type of community service program together. New Orleans County doesn't have any community service, it's the only county I'm really aware of that doesn't have a program. So I've been going back and forth with the court, trying to find a way to get this done. So our commissioners won't give us, at least from the court, they won't give us a supervisor for community service within the county. So the way I've kind of found to go around that is, so Snyder County, right now, if you commit a crime in Snyder County, you live in Sunbury, you do your community service here. So I presented that to the court and said, well, can we run this essentially through our municipality? So that the municipality essentially would supervise the community service, and the municipality that signs, it gets on board, and essentially, what will you do, this is for like DUIs, nonviolent misdemeanors. Um, so that will be the, the case or program we've gazed of. And essentially, the court came back to me and said, they wanted a deputy waiver signed, because if there's ever supervising the program, they wouldn't be able to have that, so that they don't turn around too. So, I have some questions about that, because I'm not really sure how much liability there really is for the court, regardless, it's a court order, ordering community service. But nonetheless, when we, I worked with Attorney Frank Garrigan, they said they gave us this waiver to sign according to the court. If we can get this waiver signed, and I presented this to all the municipalities as well, um, to see whoever, essentially, whoever signs it, that's where we're going to start the program, as many municipalities as we can get that are going to sign it, then that's who we're going to run the community service program with. So we presented this waiver, essentially, if we're able to get that signed off on, then the court will order community service. Um, at that point in time, if any individuals we have that get court ordered community service, until we have no municipality sign, they would all do it in Sunbury. Once we have multiple other municipalities on board, which I just got this waiver back Thursday, so I appreciate you guys being as long as you can and right away. Um, so I just got back on Thursday, been in contact with other municipalities as well, so if we sign it, then we have now finally a community service program through the county. Uh, like I said, Snyder County already kind of runs their community service for individuals living in Sunbury, through Sunbury, through Mr. Wojcowski. Um, that's what we're trying to get signed, we can get that signed, I can present that to the court, and now we finally will have a community service program in our county, which we desperately need. Um, and it's been going on for far too long where we haven't had a program. So this is nonviolent crimes, DUIs, you know, misdemeanors, that, you know, don't look at a state for the sentence on. Essentially, the court would order them to have community service, um, at that point in time, depending on what municipalities are on board, like I said, it's just Sunbury, then all the community service is going to be done through Sunbury. At some point, I see the municipalities as well, I believe we have multiple different partners on board. Um, so at that point, whatever, you want to complete your community service at, you'll get a list of the municipalities, according to their order, you know, if they have twenty hours, a hundred hours, then they would do their community service under supervision of the municipality, and the municipality would essentially report back and saying these hours are done, and then they would have, they would complete their community service at. So that's the waiver, I'm not sure if you guys have on the screen or whatever, but, um, I presented that to Mr. Lees, looking to see if we can move forward on that. Like I said, the commissioners and the court, it's not going to provide us our own supervisor, so this is kind of a go around, that would help us get the program started. We have multiple individuals, that would be any DUI, who automatically, through the sentencing guidelines, are supposed to do community service, and we don't have a program. So this would give us a program, and I think it's a great idea, we desperately need community service in our county, and this is the way I kind of found to get around it. So, I don't know if I have any questions about it, um, but that's kind of where we're at.
Any questions for D. A. O'Donnell, anyone?
Um, just so everybody's aware, I'm answering a question here, but I did review the agreement. I had some questions about our potential liability, however, I talked with Adam Purdy, and he basically quieted those questions for me. But the other thing is, in order to ensure that the city has been covered, we would be asking whoever's performing community service through us to sign a waiver of liability as well, on our behalf indemnifying us. But, the long and the short of it is that Mr. Wojcowski would be, um, in charge of giving these people jobs to do, I don't think he's going to hold them by the hand and walk them around. However, he'd be in charge of seeing it through, and it's nothing we don't already do, we've already been doing it, it's not in the county.
All right, any, any other question, anyone?
Just wanted to thank you very much.
All right, uh, so I'll make the motion to accept the New Orleans County Community Service Waiver form, do we have, do I have a second? Ister.
Yes.
Savage. Bruschus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Thank you, D. A. O'Donnell, we appreciate it, and soon as it's good to go, start sending this people over.
Hi, guys, thank you again. Like I said, this took me fourteen months from fighting uphill pretty much every step of the way it is done, because I appreciate Mr. Wojcowski helped set this up. Um, but this is something that we desperately need, and we need to have people doing community service in the, in our community. And I know at least with the community service that people have done in other counties here, they've helped them find employment, that helps them pay their fines and costs. And it's an interesting part of being a rehab and rehabilitate people, that's something that we've got to recognize, so, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, my goal is to have first.
And no more tasers.
I'm going to have a pet dog.
Yes, well, the hospital suggested being dipped by the dog, so.
Uh, moving on, uh, pool membership fees, Councilman Ister.
Forty-five is the fee for the lender for the listeners this year, make a motion to-
Second.
Thank you.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Yes, uh, moving on, Councilwoman Martina.
I want to make a motion, I would like to promote Jacob Buck, I want to take him for part-time to full-time, and he will not be getting any salary difference, and he is not getting any-
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Bruschus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Moving on, uh, Councilman Savage.
Congratulations.
Uh, Joel.
Yes.
I believe this is, I believe it's actually treated in the- So can I just mention the amount?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion for the approval of the attract and vouchers for the general fund, um, minus the amount of the contract, so the new amount is seventy-seven thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Liquid fuels an amount of eight hundred fifteen dollars and eight cents, and payroll an amount of seventy-one thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Bruschus. Yes. Uh, moving on to discussion topics, uh, Councilman Barnhart, Fire Department Municipality Agreements.
Been several years since we assessed the local municipalities, worked for money for the fire department. Uh, Dan Saxton out there, or Lumpy, you want to?
Well, I think prior to reverting up, John, I think, you need to be the department.
Yeah, I think that was referred to be one of-
Before we talk about anything, I mean, I think the fire department and council, we have to stay in place before we, well.
This was just a discussion, not going to be a-
Yeah, I would say, I would say, you guys in your next-
But just so there isn't-
Now you have something to take back to the meeting.
Yeah.
Can you come to the meeting so we can discuss it?
Uh, are you going to be there?
Yeah.
Then I probably can't show.
Yeah, so let us know when that department meeting is, that way, we can have input, and then maybe at the next work-
First one day in a while.
That way, the next work session, we can discuss what was discussed there, and that way, we can take it back to the municipality, does that work?
I think that's it.
Dan, Dan, you want to say, or say?
Seven thirty.
Dan, you want to add anything? You want to add anything, Dan?
I'll be brief. Dan Saxton, Treasurer, Sunbury Fire Department. For those in the audience who may not know, okay, the Sunbury Fire Department provides fire protection to the city, and we also provide primary and architected to the three surrounding townships, upper Augusta, lower Augusta, and the town of Kelly. The city gives the Sunbury Fire Department a stipend each year to assist with everyday operating expenses, maintenance, upkeep of apparatus, and that sort of thing. We also have a negotiated agreement with the three townships, who also provide a stipend to the city to help offset those expenses, those everyday expenses. The current agreements that we're operating under were negotiated, I believe, in nineteen ninety-one, okay? At that time, the amount of the, uh, uh, stipend that the township paid to us was based on, uh, assessed property values in the respective townships, okay? We came up with a number. Obviously, in thirty-plus years, the township property values have gone up tenfold, okay? But the fire department is still receiving the same amount of money from those townships for that fire protection that we got thirty-plus years ago, it has never changed. The fire department is currently undergoing, um, a consolidation process, we're making improvements to operate more efficiently, more effectively, provide better service to our communities, okay? At the appropriate time, and as the chief alluded to, we don't have any numbers, but at the appropriate time, any kind of, uh, renegotiation needs to take place, okay? So again, we can continue to provide the proper fire protection to our communities, and we will be asking the city to help us in those negotiations.
Pretty much it? All right.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Danny.
Is that it? Uh, anything else, Councilman Barnhart, on that topic?
Nope, I'm going to get some numbers and go into the fire department with-
All right, awesome, thank you. Uh, moving on here, Shade Tree line item, so the Shade Tree Commission's been asking for quite some time to have their own line item in separate, one of the special accounts, so they could, once again, fundraise for items that they need to help bring awareness and also to plant trees throughout the community. Uh, right now, there is money allocated to them throughout, in our budget, but once again, it's very, it's only five hundred dollars, and five hundred, five hundred dollars doesn't go that far as we know in today's world. So what they're asking is, obviously, not the nice, would just for a topic, and Julie, Joe, time and any time, that they have a line item added, so when they do raise funds, that money goes into there. Therefore, it's not always a resetting balance, each year, they can, um, put it, funds in there through their fundraising events to, to put some money in there, so when they do need something as, you know, to plant trees or back money for grants, they have that line item there to do so.
It, it's also, if I may, to show that, um, when we sell T-shirts, which was, that was the beginning of it, um, that we can show the offset with our budget and the money that we're taking in. Um, we are selling the, the T-shirts for ten dollars, if, if it's a larger type-
Yeah.
T-shirt, it's a little more, um, but it's been dragging around since late twenty twenty-three. Uh, there's checks that are now non-negotiable because of the time period, and there's cash, which was put in an envelope, and I guess, just in a drawer. So I want, for the Shade Tree, everyone in the Shade Tree Commission wants accountability, we want to show, this is the money we're taking in, so that there's no questions.
So that's, so that's the reasoning behind it, so they have that line item, so they do fundraisers, they have it there for when they do need to do, like, you know, they want to do, like, you know, develop trees, they cost more money than I would see sat places do, so. Correct, it's only been a couple of years, money in the drawer, it's not like repeating currents, but it's okay. So Nate, any issues with that, anyone? All right. All right, Julie, they said it's long overdue, we'll put- No.
No, I liked it. And I was just asked if that was an interest, interest-bearing drawer, but I guess not. Little joke.
The check, the little black book.
Little sense of humor.
All right, thank you, Julie, anything else you'd like to add?
Um, not at this moment, but, uh, thank you very much for finally recognizing the fact.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, moving on here to city basement rental, uh, there was an individual who was at one of our, not ours, she was at Career Link's days here in City Hall, and they started talking about how they needed space. Jeff was kind of up to show them some ba- some space that was available to us in the basement, uh, I'll just turn it over to Teresa, just so she can kind of, because she was the individual who wants to do the roads to a new you. If you do have any question for what she'd like to do with the rooms, that way, if there's any questions, she can answer them here directly, so basically, long story short, she'd like to rent a, uh, rooms as the cheapest amount as possible, which is here in her statement here of trying to bring, uh, different types of items to the community as a, you know, address for success closet, different food distributions and things like that, that she does drive to the community, and she needs some place to store those types of odd items when she does get those donations. So does anybody have any questions for Teresa on what she wants to do or anything like that, that she's here, that she can answer for any of them? No questions?
What, um, items will she be storing and how?
So Teresa, she's, so what items will she be storing, and how would you be storing them, because one of the issue was, if, if there is food, like, to have them obviously in bins, so, you know, it doesn't become, mice infected and things like that, because of that, that was only one of our biggest, I won't say concern, but if it was a concern, we could do something like that.
No, I started buying totes to keep, like, the dry food goods, and, and we would purchase a fridge and freezer. And when I say we, I mean myself and a volunteer doing it without pocket ourselves, since we are committed on funds. Um, we are going to be purchasing a freezer and a fridge that we can store anything that could be cold or frozen, to keep those things from going bad, too, so. No more than a fridge. No, we, um, currently what we've been doing is anything left over that we have, we've either taken, so like, the baked goods, we take those to the V F S who are in town. And then anything that's frozen, we have been taking that down to even, because it's so difficult to buy. And then with the dresser success closet, we would have the folding store down there as well, and I spoke to and met Jill with Career Link, and she showed me the space that they have in this building that I didn't even exist in. Um, and they're overwhelmed with what they have, so we talked about collaborating, so that they would keep some stuff for emergency purposes, and then my understanding would be, the rest would come down to us. And then they would be one of the two referral sources that we would have, the people that come and get out with.
Thank you.
I have a question, didn't the basement used to fly and have like mold in it, does it still have flood for mold in it?
No, actually, we've been pretty good there.
Oh, have you? Okay. And the other question I have is the electric for the refrigerator and freezer, are they gonna be included in all the rent, or is that gonna be picked up?
Yeah, it's not a separate meter.
Pardon me?
I said it's not a separate meter, it's included in the rent.
All right, and we can get Joel to draw up the simple lease, have the council prove it, and go from there. That work, Cruz, or something? All right, awesome, thank you. Uh, moving on here, city, uh, city, city finances. Spank, did you see you want to comment on it?
I, oh.
I think Kevin sent out a message a couple of weeks ago. I think there's a reason for that. I think the, the name is for that is the fact that, as you know, we do not take anything a tran, okay? So we did a lot of, we paid a lot of goals for that deal. We prefer not to be able to have to transfer money around, so right now, we're, we're fine. City's fine, but, you know, we would like to curtail any unnecessary spending until the tax money starts coming in, which is, it's not a unreasonable request. So, you know, if, if each department, if you watch what they're doing, they only spend when we need to spend, you know, obviously, it's emergency, it's emergency, so we don't, you know.
Okay, I knew, like I said, I can speak for the police department, like, when our subscriptions come in, that's when they come in, you know, I can't help but say, hey.
Subscriptions don't have to be paid right away, they're thirty days a day.
Yeah, but I'm saying they come in in January, where we can't wait till March, or like some things, like, we'll do the best that we can, but sometimes we, when they come in, we have to pay them.
Everything doesn't have to be paid right away, and you don't have to buy stuff right away.
Yeah, no, I agree with the spending on that portion, but you know, you know how we are, when we wanna get our money, so are these other vendors that we deal with.
Sure.
We try to keep the most positive relationship as we can.
I mean, there's always, especially, it's not any better, all the departments do, and sometimes, it's not something that has to be done right away.
Yeah.
Then, buy the stuff, when the money starts coming in.
Heard you say it, buy the stuff.
I didn't make sure we budget, we might start adding to that tan money that we've been sending away through the years, because, of course, businesses cost more money, so.
Sure.
I, I, I think there's a good, and you're gonna have to treasure next year, so I think that's a good idea, and I think, you know, along with that, you know, we, we can start identifying how we're doing, we're going away. I think that needs to be more of a focus, actually, it really needs to be a priority, so we can do that. I'm not sure how you feel about it, but, you know, we talked about, we keep kicking it down the road, and, um, yeah, we really need to, do what we're talking about, that we're all good with, and, you know, identify what's at stake.
But, you know, the laws go fine. Yeah, but I say, when, when Kevin sends out emails, like, maybe a little more details when he says things, it's, you know, it's just a statement, and then it's like, well, what's going on here? And no one really knows, we're left up in the air, so.
And, you know, and I don't think he can say that to scare anybody, he's just saying that precaution, it's a, it's a, we don't have to do.
All right, well, that works, thank you, man. Uh, moving on here to insurance policies, so every year, at the beginning of the year, we review our insurance policies with parties, and he just had some things he wanted us to review, um, such as, obviously, only city employees driving city equipment, city vehicles. I mean, I do know at times that, uh, the U T V is run out to the base, used by the baseball, baseball league and the softball league. Recommend that's a big no-no, because they are not city employees, and if something would happen, that's a major liability on the city. Also, he said, when, you know, usage of facilities to make sure that we are getting the insurance policies, such as some of the ones that we get for your carry-up here, like, the district, we school district using our softball fields and tennis courts. I mean, we don't have anything on record down at City Hall that we're named as an insurer, if someone would get injured. I don't know if that's up at Parks, or I don't know if they have anything up there, but it's like, make sure, like, those types of things that we're using, people who are renting our facilities are actually turning that paperwork in, like, the Y M C A uses our, uses the pool on, during the summer for swim meets, and we couldn't find anything on record for them either. So he said, make sure when these facilities are being used, when people are, make sure that the policies are being turned. So that way, he just wanted us to relay that to council when those things are happening. Questions on that? All right, uh, moving on here, I know this was one in the past, Councilman Iceberg looked at, but, uh, Slide three sixty, it's an app on your cell phone. I think it's something we should start looking into, that any city-paid device has this app on it to be able to track where our phones are going and what they're doing. So for example, if you know, hey, said employee's supposed to be done working at three-thirty while they're still here at seven o'clock at night, it's just something that I think we should look into, like I said, where, where our phones are going from our city employees, along with ourselves, where our phones are going. You know, they're paid for by taxpayer, I think they have a right to know where their money's going with their phone, so. Or, or if you lose one as well, it can track it and things like that, so. Any questions on that one, Light three sixty, city phones?
Do we know how many employees have, do we have phones?
Yeah. And questions on that one? All right, and the last one, R C track, Councilman Iceberg, you said, you were gonna meet with individual.
Question.
Yes, sir.
I think it's people that are interested in it, I'd like to have those names of the time they're home in.
Okay.
Get ready to design, I don't wanna put something together, no, I don't like.
I thought there was already design and approval and dollar amount, that's how we got the grant money for it.
We don't schedule, but I just wanna make sure that.
All right. All right, well, I'll try, I'll have them reach out, see if they reach out. All right, uh, moving on here to announcements, uh, we are still looking for, to fill some board zoning at one year, one three-year term. Two positions to the, I mean, one, two, uh, excuse me, two positions to the hard, one architect, and one individual for Board of Appeals. Uh, on March twenty-second, at, uh, one twenty-eight More Laker Drive, that's to John Longfield, they'll be having the TV and tire recycling event. Uh, you can find the flyer, put the flyer online, also down front, it is one dollar per pound for TVs, and tires are also five dollars each. Oh, that is March twenty-second, from ten to twelve. So you must call City Hall to register. Uh, the next City Hall council meeting will take place here February twenty-fourth at six fifteen. The all-inclusive Easter egg hunt will be April fifth, from nine to twelve, at the Goodroll Playground. Uh, the Fire Police Chinese Auction will be at the Sunbury Eagles, which is thirty-three South Thursday, on May tenth, from eleven A M to four P M. Just moving in the public, oh, any other announcements, by any? All right, uh, there was one public comment sent in, uh, so this was from Madison Mall. Uh, she would like to, her public comment request is to, uh, uh, to put more sidewalk trash cans throughout the city to help come, uh, combat the litter issues that we may see. Uh, especially since McDonald's was put up the north into town, you see a higher volume of trash, and, you know, this is a small waste can on the walking routes, from Marcus Street, Front Street, she'd like to see that happen, so that was her public comment. And now, is there any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Brian Suwaf, um, as usual, back here to talk about Sussman Avenue. Uh, last time I brought pictures in, Mr. Iceberg said he appreciated it, so I took a walk on Saturday, and got a few more. There are basically issues all the way up and down Sussman Avenue. As you can see from the pictures, there are quite a few of the sidewalks that have been raised. Um, my understanding from talking to representatives from G N R, you know, the construction company, uh, is that the wrong type of stone was used underneath the sidewalks, and as a result, um, the water's not draining, it's freezing underneath the sidewalks, and it's causing these issues. There's a lot of them that are cracked. On the last page of pictures, you'll see that, very last picture, uh, the one corner of the sidewalk has come up so far that my son can actually put his foot underneath the sidewalk, it's that far up. So I had a couple of questions, um. When the inspection was done, um, I, I don't understand how the work passed inspection when it's not up to city code, if the wrong type of stone was used. And if a private resident had this work done, and the final product looks like this, would city coach be okay with how this looks?
Absolutely not.
I don't know his name, he was one of the young guys that ran mostly of that down there. Um, and then there was, uh, an older gentleman that showed up, and he was not happy with the way it looked either.
From the company?
I'm sorry?
The older gentleman was from the company?
He was from G N R, yes.
What was that time, Chris, twenty-seven or?
Uh, yeah, it was a few days after the last meeting I was at, uh, I'd have to go back and look. When I was at the last meeting, I mentioned that the gentleman that plows the parking lot, Mr. Walberg's parking lot beside our house, uh, decided to plow the sidewalks with his truck and took a chunk out of the sidewalk, because a few days after that, the G N R guys came to look at it. Uh, I'm out to talk to him to explain why there was a big chunk missing in the sidewalk, and that's when he told me that the wrong type of stone was used. And when I asked him, why did you use the wrong type of stone, if you used the wrong type of stone, he said, it wasn't our call, that's what we're directed to do, what it says. He said it was import and not designed, was what his words were. So, I don't know who makes the call as far as what kind of materials are used. I'm not sure why we went by PNDOT standards, which Mr. Walberg said were more stringent than city code when this is a city street. And if PNDOT standards are more stringent than our city code, and this is what we ended up with, that's pretty bad. The sidewalks in front of our house were replaced, and at the one meeting, we mentioned that they were graded towards our foundation. Uh, the response we got was that during the inspection, that would be noted, and if it was wrong, it would be fixed. Nothing was done, they're still like that, the water still comes and rains by our foundation. So there's, there's obvious problems, Mr. Iceberg, I know you mentioned there was a one-year warranty, but how does that work with the residents? Because I'd certainly like more than a one-year warranty on stuff like this, because.
That was above ground, was below ground.
Right, and, and the one picture, uh, in front, I believe, at seven twenty-eight Sussman Avenue, the sidewalk actually sunk, and when you shine a light down there, there's like four inches where you can't even see fill. So.
We were meeting on Thursday.
Thursday. And, and when I was talking to the G N R guys, he said, hopefully, when it falls out into there, the sidewalks will go back down, and I said, and it doesn't? And he said, well, we're hoping that it does, but when it does, there's a likelihood that they're gonna crack, because they're gonna be settling, and if it falls and washes out what's under there, they're gonna sink even more, so.
City code is you have to have, put your forms down, you have to have two to three inches of two B stone plus three blind inch, that's the city code.
Right. Mr. Walberg, when he was here, said there was no reinforcement done, because Spank and Nate both brought those. There was no reinforcement done. There are also three driveways on the opposite side of Street Limited Numbers, and I know the driveways, when they go across the sidewalk, are supposed to be reinforced, and I'd like to know whether that was done, because I highly doubt it. But I don't know who makes the call as far as what specs we go by, but. Mr. Walberg said we went by PNDOT specs because they're more stringent, those were his words, as a one-year.
Word of word.
It does not.
Now, I mean, as you said, that's what we see on the sidewalks, but don't we see underground? That we can't see what's happening, and after, as you said, after the one-year warranty is up, whose responsibility is the fix-it then?
And, and with the way these are, if someone's walking in front of my house and they trip over this, who's that one? The contractor? Did I get that in right?
I have a meeting on Thursday, could you give Derek your number, would you, are you, do you work there, don't you?
I work from home.
Could you maybe, if he would call you at some point during that meeting, so you can ask these questions to somebody?
Sure.
If it works, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to jump in here, but if that is something we could discuss. I'm not saying I want you to take over the whole meeting, or have it, just you guys figure it out, but I would like to have a conversation.
Sure.
Maybe you could hear a little something different that's not coming from us.
Yep.
And, any other questions, questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Suwaf?
I, who's gonna be at the meeting on Thursday?
Myself.
I will be there.
Myself, Steve, uh, Councilman Barnhart, Jim, um, uh, me, the engineer. The contractor won't be there, he's been to work.
Maybe he should be there.
Well, I think, this is gonna be a question for you too, but I mean, I think that if this stuff's presented to them, they should acknowledge that they have receipt of these standing issues before you take them, uh, warranty, that's out. Is that something we can ask for?
Hey, Jonathan, I listened to your sidewalk statement when you brought it up, right?
I just, I want you to be able to ask a question to, like, is the contractor not there, you're probably maybe gonna hear the same thing, but maybe you'll hear something different if we.
Ethan and Gary need to know more about this, aren't you?
I guess you're gonna be helping it too, so I'm gonna take a try, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I also, the person that plows Mr. Walberg's parking lot, as I mentioned, he took a big chunk out of it plowing the sidewalk with his truck a couple of weeks ago. Today, my wife had him on video doing the same thing, only he hit it pretty hard and bounced his plow about three feet into the air, he hit the sidewalks so hard, and also plowed probably fifty to a hundred pounds of stone from the parking lot, over the sidewalk, and out into the intersection, and then just left it there. I don't, I have pictures of him, but he doesn't, there's no nameless truck. I think my wife has license plates, so she might be able to. It's not my parking lot, so.
Maybe contact Mr. Walberg also and see if those are done.
Do you wanna counter that?
Thank you.
Mr. Suwaf, thank you for these, because I, I will say, I've been up every time, I'm just, I'm a contractor, I love my, every time it seems like. So I just wanted to thank you.
Sure.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, man.
Uh, I live in property on Sussman Avenue, which I happen to live in. They gave them to work at my property, and I actually, um, I was a state of the art. I'll just go back, we'll talk to you after stall. But I don't see why I have to pay for anything that they did wrong, it's not my fault. And the first thing that they had here in the spring, with all of us coming up, the comment was made about, this is gonna cost the, they, they also, no, it's not gonna cost you people anything. We're gonna be picking it up, we're gonna take care of the whole thing. Well, I made a list of some things that were wrong, I'm sorry, I don't have pictures, my phone's out, and I can't tell you all. I'm sorry. Anyway, in the front of my house, the steps to walk onto the porch, before they graded it down so deep, and I understand it didn't, and I lived here in handicap spot, like the alley and on Sussman Avenue. They took it much deeper at the time, and I actually went out and measured these different steps to see how wrong they were, because when you walk down them, you can, you know they're not the same height. That's one thing you can always tell when you're on steps, they got to be the same, because you're used to that. So, the top step was moving along, went up to the porch, was five inches high. The middle step was six inches high, and the bottom step was only three inches. When you come down off of that porch, everybody needs to know, be careful on that bottom step, because it's gonna throw you. I don't wanna be responsible to somebody, or one of my friends coming out my front door and falling, as the boy got these steps. I talked to my contractor, uh, because I was told that do not, that the city's not gonna pay for it, they've been on my porch, so I'm supposed to pay for something. I don't understand why, but, um, that's the way it is. The sidewalk in front of the steps. The sidewalk in front of the steps has cracked, replace it. And now it's the point where one of them cracked this way and then they went this way, so there's an open leg at least. I would say at least a good inch of cement, just laying there, it's gonna pop off. So, um, I appreciate it, he's been here for all my front porch on the side of it, at the alley, there's a slot. And I I know that, uh, I had my whole side of, um, plaster cemented. Cedric came and did it for me, he was the contractor. They started at the bathroom house and then on the side and right out to the front. It really looked nice because it was kind of a bit uneven and stuff. Now, when they were there working right there at the alley and and all this, all of it started to come off in the front of it and on the side, also between the house and the sidewalk. He footwashed some other something the whole way down to close that, uh, gap there. And it was, looked nice, really looking nice, it was a great job. But now, from all this, everything going on here at the house, it's broken open the whole way back along the side, there's a, uh. I questioned Jim and asked him, I said, I'm concerned because when you come around the corner of my house, you can actually stick your hand up to here, underneath my house, if there's nothing there. And I said to him, I'm concerned about this, is this gonna affect my, my foundation in my house or anything eventually? If ice and water is not, and it's warm, that's not gonna bother. Okay, well, that's Jim's word, I'm a homeowner and I've owned a lot of homes, my husband, I used to, I rented rentals and use them as rentals. So, I I know some of the things that are not right with this property.
I have a quick question. Did Mr. Stoll finish the project yet, any reason for?
No, he had to, he had his special order line because of the color.
Color, yes, we spoke two weeks ago, three weeks ago, they said everything was ordered.
Yes.
But we stood there talking that day with Mr. Stoll, yourself and I, and that back you're feeling too. I think that's in, Mr. Stoll did to fix that area.
But I don't think he should have to, I shouldn't have even had to call him to come up there to do anything. To begin with, the, all the steps is much smaller than the opening at the, at the porch, on the porch. So, I'm getting banisters made, he's gonna make the banisters for there. I have to pay for that, but I know for a fact the guy that has the property on there inside the alley, they built that nice wooden little like a porch thing with steps, they just did that for him. And the man across the street that's not living there anymore, I'm not sure who owns it either, it's catty-cornered, if you may. They put up a little railing, bringing up and down, or whoever's going up and down those steps. But these homeowners did not pay for that. I think maybe the contractor paid for it, I don't know, I don't know who paid for it, the contractor is the one that put those things on for the people. On the front porch, on the banister with steps, the way my, my porch was just done four years ago and Nick Stoll, he's a construction person here on Sunbury, and he redated high outside the porch and my front porch because they had a rile iron on. This really was starting to look really, really bad. This house was in very bad shape, so I bought it from Rosemary, um, I've known her for years, she attended the same churches as I did. So, um, that's why I ended up buying it. But, when we come out my front door on the porch, the steps are here, like the opening, I'll say, let's say it was like maybe six feet opening. And now the porch steps are maybe four. So now I have all this space over here, if somebody's coming out my door and they turn around, they talk and they take a step, they're liable to end up down on the sidewalk because there's nothing there to stop them. So, it was suggested that we would put another post in there. I said, I don't know, I don't like that at all. A post that was in the middle originally should be moved down, so it's sure as hell, so it looks like here's a post, here's a post, then here's the other post. With a little banister in between. I put a lot of money in that porch to get it, it's not the way I wanted it, and now I've just sort of polluted like the whole thing. And the same on the other side, because it's on the side, right there at the front porch on both sides. Over here, it's just a very small opening. So that's where the banister, yeah, the banister's gonna go up there, they'll go up to the steps. So they have an arm rail, so that side's gonna be okay. But I'm not happy with the work that was done with this contractor. He was not polite, his workers were not nice. I said to him about the place where it was black on the side and down the side, I said to the woman, I said, can you guarantee you're sure? I said, how, how are you gonna fix this or what are you gonna do because we're not doing anything with it? And I said, but it wasn't like that when you started, I just had that done two years ago. He said, well, I guess you're gonna pay for it again. I thought, you're a conscious person, just a young woman. I thought, how dare you talk to me like that? I'm sure you wouldn't like it if somebody like that talked to him like that on his property. So that, that's pretty much my complaints, I have a lot of problems up there.
Well, Thursday, like we discussed earlier around meeting, I had the contractor, when you called me your first time, you were in the practice and so forth.
Yes.
So, you're aware of that, so one of the weather breaks to do that, I called him. I get you have the talk with Mr. Stoll, he said about the hand railing and the front railing.
That's because I knew if you had more than three steps, I had to add those rails, you have that a handrail.
Your porch, your, your steps weren't over to where they were either, were they?
No, no, it's just that they made the steps smaller, now I have all this problem on the porch.
So they didn't put your air?
Did you have rails before here else?
No, she said she didn't have rails before because there was only one step on the porch, now there's three.
And you didn't make the steps up?
Yeah. This, this is what she's development about, they poured the new steps, my son had a picture of it. They didn't, they didn't go along with the foundation, so there's a big open gap there.
Derek, you said, you said these things are recorded, correct?
Yes.
Because in the past, there is issues with people saying things and not following to go on their work, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so, as Mr. Suwaf said, so if someone in the meeting stated that a stone change, it sounded like there's a lot of issue with sidewalks, whoever stated in the meeting that, hey, we're gonna go with this type of stone and said this type of stone, would be recorded in that meeting, correct?
So, even, even if that was the case, you can't change the stone outside of what's in the bid and what was approved by council without a change order as far as the materials go.
Well, someone obvious, I mean, ob- obviously he said she said thing, but like someone, a representative, not necessarily representative, but someone who was working at GNR stated that, so either someone's lying or whatever happened. But we're just gonna say, so whatever took place in the meeting will be recorded, correct?
So, yeah, but we, but that's, that's not really the issue, it's what you guys approved necessarily, because materials, that would be a change order.
Oh, no, I'm not disagreeing.
So like, we would have to check what it was in the original bid because I, I, I.
You don't, you don't know.
So we would have to check what's in the original bid and check what stone is there and see if it matches up to the original bid. Doesn't match with the original bid, how did that happen? Did they put stone that was supposed to be in the ground, that was supposed to be to go around piping, that was different stone, put that in the sidewalk? I, I, I don't know, that's, that's, I don't understand that. So, so that, so once we find that out, because obviously we could, according to what we're told, we can see the stone, if there was stones in there also, we can make that determination if it's the correct stone and if it wasn't, then why did that happen?
Well, yes, we can put our hands out and get a sample.
Correct.
Or your foot.
As soon as I get my phone, there's some of these pictures off, it's much easier to understand.
He wants you to see it.
Well, the porch should've changed, I mean, obviously, that's, that's a mistake. If your porch changed, then someone needs to be responsible for that.
Yeah, and had some of those steps were terrible. I mean, I was coming down there today, I thought, now with a lot of this, this is real, it's shallow.
Kind of go back with Mr. Suwaf said, you know, if someone trips over that gap or someone was off her porch because of that, I mean, Mr. Eisner said that there's a contractor gonna be responsible for that, hopefully something does not happen.
So, I did pay, uh, Mr. Stoll, okay, he came to down payment mine, that took all this to place, because he needed that money to order my special things. So, when I was talking to him, he said, I would go to the meeting with you if you want me to, that's what I said, no, that's okay, I said, I'll be artist. And he said, if at any time they wanna talk to me, all I can do is call, because he said, I was there, we had the meeting with him. So, I don't think it's fair that I have to pay for this, and these were not my mistakes. If it would've been, if it would've been done, if I had somebody like Mr. Stoll, his crew went here and poured all this stuff out there, he would've made the spray and not charged me any money. He said, if it is found, that they're going to pick up the tab for this, he said, he will give me my deposit back. I'll say, there won't be any problem with that, he's another wonderful man, he's a very nice man, and so.
I recommend you not to do any work to the person.
You can take, I have someone right on the front of the front porch, that's across the street, and you can really see how small that bottom step is.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, ma'am.
Julie Vershes, um, just thinking here, so you all approved the second line for shade tree?
We don't, it was, it was a discussion topic that we all agreed upon, so it doesn't have to be about this, has to be created by the finance department and Nate can get that done as soon as he directs his, his people.
Okay, if you could let me know then how I should deposit the money that was in the drawer, I will do so.
Alright, I mean, it's as simple as when you, when it gets created, just go down and say, we have these funds, please deposit them in, however it gets, I imagine it'd be shade tree commission or shade tree line, like something along those lines.
And then I'll get a receipt.
I'm not promising the receipt, it must be put in there.
I want a receipt.
Then ask Kevin, or ask the finance department for a receipt.
Alright, thank you.
So you said that there are checks that are now void now because it's too long, how much money of that is there that was never?
There was a couple of checks, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but there was a couple of checks in there.
And you can't, you can't cash it now?
No.
Any other public comment at this time? Alright, turn to speed.